2020 at 7:00 PM. We do have seven board members present, but for identification purposes, please raise your hand when your name is called. Linda Alderman.
Present.
Chris Cunningham.
Present.
Julie Dandrio.
Present.
Susan Moore.
Present.
Chanda Olmsted.
Present.
Melodya Payne.
Present.
Harold Wingert.
Present.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? So move.
Suck it.
It's been moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Harold Wingert that we approve tonight's agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 7-0. We do not have any items on the consent agenda tonight. We do have one comment from the public which came in. It came in on September 24th, and it's submitted by Jamie Winslow, and the comment reads, Dear USD 290 School Board, I think that you should not go back to the full schedule for the schools. The reasoning behind this is that we have had an increase in COVID-19 cases in Ottawa, and with having more kids in each class, it would be impossible to social distance in the classrooms. I personally like how it is now, and I know a lot of people who also like it how it is, including some teachers. I think we shouldn't risk going back to school full-time and risk this being a COVID-19 hotspot. Sincerely, 8th grader Jamie Winslow. And this ends that comment. All right, up first is a report and presentation on our STEAM, S-T-A-M bus. Mrs. Whitaker and Mrs. Howar are going to give us a presentation on that. Welcome.
It's up there, and I actually think it's in a PDF document, so Dean, I just.
Dean, we'll have to scroll through, okay? We're good? We can click, okay. Good evening, thank you for having us. And so I have Mrs. Howar, my technology instructional coach at the high school with me today. And I think you would remember in March, we were here and we presented on this idea of our STEAM bus. Well, it has taken flight. It is truly one of the most epic school ride projects that I could ever imagine. And what she's basically going to give you today is a little update on where we are, how the students have been involved, and how many of our teachers and our career pathways are involved in our current project and where we're at. Someone turn it over to Lori.
All right, thank you for having me again, and we were just discussing that it is almost to the day, six months since we first stood here and proposed this idea to you. So I think that this is not where I thought we would be in six months, actually. So it's super exciting to actually be here. So Dean, if you would scroll.
You're good.
I'm good. How do I scroll? Oh, awesome. All right, so during our lot of PD, when we first came back to school, this is the OHS staff. Ms. Whitaker purchased shirts for all of the staff royalty. And so we were able to ask our transportation department to bring the bus that we would be able to use for the project over for this group photo. And this is also when most of our staff learned about the STEAM bus. And they were all very excited about what possibilities could happen in that realm. So that was September the 4th. Dr. Cobb shared with me that he wasn't exactly sure of the timeframes of the buses. So I thought from that conversation that it would be November before we would be able to have the bus on site. Ironically, the bus showed up on September 14th, which was fantastic. So day one, that's Mr. Menifee there, we were counting seats and kind of just getting our first look at the bus. But then on the 14th is when the stop sign was operational for the last time. Shortly after that, it was removed, and the students began removing the seats. This in itself was a learning opportunity. As you can tell, there's some students underneath the bus, and they had to coordinate their removal techniques. And that's the removal of the stop sign, which was again another double check with students to make sure the power was off. They took that initiative, and so we are disassembling very quickly. The photo on the right with the seat kind of opened up. There was only two students and myself on the bus during that moment, and I was just there listening. And the conversation that they were having on how to remove those seats that had kind of rusted in the bus was unlike any I've ever heard before. There's a lot of critical thinking and collaboration between those students. It was really great to see and experience that, just that one moment of many already. So the bus is now empty, and that's them cleaning out. There are 24 seats now stacked in Mr. Menifee's area. And they are assessing kind of what the slabs might look like, if that's the direction which they're thinking that we're going to go. This is some measurements to assess the ribbing and to build the infrastructure for the slabs, as Mr. Menifee and a student there, just kind of getting an idea of what that might look like so that those ribbings can stay on the side of the bus. And the blue tape that's marking it to the side is some discussions about having an exit to the side to build those steps in. I don't believe that's going to be the case now. I think they are going to explore using their existing emergency exit door as that primary exit. We also were able to schedule a Zoom meeting with the original STEAM bus individuals that I had got to visit with, I got to see them in Texas. And so these are our students asking questions, and also Ms. Whitaker joined us and Mr. Grell also. So we all got to ask some questions and hear about what they experienced, what they learned in that process. So that was very helpful. And then this is our woods team and architecture and design. They're getting their preliminary measurements. And that conversation sounds a lot like, well, did you measure from the seats or all the way to the front of the bus? So it's a lot of learning opportunities about needing to know exact measurements and exactly what are you measuring? So they are going to be using SketchUp, and they've already, which has been installed on the desktops. And so they're going to begin the internal design. And as you can see, the flooring has all pretty much been removed, I think. There's a point where along this edge, these two edges, they're waiting to remove those to determine what's underneath to see how they can remove these last pieces here. So this is the next piece to come off. So we also have our marketing students. Mr. Menifee suggested that we park the bus on, let me see, the south side of their area with a large banner on it so that we could showcase this as a student-created STEM bus, STEAM bus. And so our marketing students are working on that, what that banner might look like. So right now, we are in the process of determining what the licensing requirements will be to register this vehicle after we have changed its purpose to some degree. What the registration, the driving license, driving requirements, and most importantly, what our safety requirements will be. So we're waiting for a phone call back from the Kansas Highway Patrol to tell us if we have to keep those emergency exits on the windows, or if the rear one will be sufficient. And then the other items are the wrap design, Ms. Fisher and her students are working on that. Mr. Lasley's group is exploring the solar options. They would like to have solar, a generator, and the opportunity to plug in all three options for the bus. Mr. Menifee and the maintenance and the tech department are working on the infrastructure for all the HVAC and electrical PEA systems, whatever those decisions will be. Ms. Waymire's classes are working on STEM lessons to determine what the modules would look like. And then the business and finance are working on sponsor pitches and then for the bus, and then also for modules that will be on the bus. So those are things that are in progress. And we would like to be able to, a lot of the windows are out of the bus. And so they would like to be able to slab the bus before the weather changes. So if they could get to that point and slab it, then they feel like they could work with the interior throughout the winter. And then we'd also like to get input from our elementary staff to see what they would like to do with the bus to make sure that we have power and infrastructure to do a majority of what they would like to do. And then the marketing things to get sponsors, design the interior, and then design the wrap. So that's where we are. It is truly amazing.
The day that we had the Zoom meeting with the school from Texas was pretty awesome. Our students sat there kind of big-eyed and a little bit of shocked. And I know Mr. Grell asked a lot of questions, and Mrs. Howar and myself did. But the conversations that we heard amongst our students after that and all the information that they learned, and kind of realizing that this dream can come to life, it's really neat. A lot of the teachers are talking about how the, a lot of the boys in Mr. Menifee's class are coming to their geometry class, and they're talking about the bus, and they're really excited about what this project is going to look like at the end. And so I did tell the Kansas State Department of Ed that this is probably the most epic school-wide project that we could have ever dreamt up. And so we want to thank you all for giving us the opportunity. Lori had an idea and a dream, and she was able to come and pitch it to you. And it is really, truly turning out to be something amazing and spectacular for our students. So thank you all, and we'll continue to keep you updated. Does anyone have any questions about kind of the process or where we are right now?
I have two questions. One, is there any other schools in Kansas doing this, or just us?
No, we, no, and though, it's funny that you ask that, Chris. The gentleman from Texas that you saw on the computer screen, he had said that everybody in Texas thought that they were loony bins when they decided to do this, and they didn't think they would ever be able to pull it off. And we had shared with him at the end of that Zoom meeting that we were glad that they were loony bin, and that we are excited to be on that bus with them. Because I think there are some people that think we're a little insane and do not think we can pull this off, and so it's really exciting. And I know that Chris, or Jay Scott from the Kansas State Department of Ed, he's a part of the redesign. I have invited him down. I told him whenever things get calm and he's able to kind of get out and get into schools that he has to come check this out.
And then is the bus able to fit in our CTE if we need to work on it in the winter?
Yeah, Mr. Menifee, what did he tell, did he tell, address that with you?
I think height would work, I was just wondering length.
Yeah, did he address that with you at all?
We kind of talked about it needing maybe at the maintenance.
At the maintenance, because it's not quite big enough at the CT shop. Okay, great question.
So Friday night is ballgame. My wife ran into a student who she had, and he turned around and pointed to the bus.
Did he?
And said that he was working on the bus. Explained what was going on, and I thought that was kind of cool that, you know, students are taking pride in the bus. You know what I mean? So job well done.
Absolutely. And it's really neat how many pathways are coming together to pull this off. I think that is, I don't know that we even dreamt it to be, that it could have been that collaborative in nature. And the more departments and the more teachers and the more students that are getting involved, just make it all the better.
Well, thank you.
Thank you guys.
So many real-life skills.
Yes.
That they're learning.
At a time when I think we all need something positive, and so I don't know that this could have come at a better time.
Well, and it can be just such a benefit to the community as a whole.
Absolutely.
It's really exciting.
Thank you so much for coming to share and update us. It's really great. Thank you so much. All right, so up next, 5.02, Dr. Cobb is going to present a plan to develop a capital committee.
All right, so back in June, I believe, we had a conversation regarding a capital committee and developing a group that would meet annually or biannually to discuss the longevity of capital funds and a five-year plan. We kind of put that off because there's, if you didn't know, there's been a lot of stuff going on. But there was basically just the one major agenda item tonight, so I thought we would go ahead and address this one. So the idea being that one or two board members would sit on a group with myself and Darrell and Terry and maybe administrators, depending on where we're at in the process, and help to determine what that five-year plan is so that when we do have capital projects, there's more conversation taking place between the board than just me telling the board what our capital projects are. So in order to be able to do that, we would need the board to approve the use of a capital committee. And this would ultimately be approved annually in that same meaning that we appoint all of the other persons to different groups and organizations, as well as determining who the person on that capital committee is going to be. I would recommend, honestly, I would recommend one. It's a small group to begin with. My concern is if we have two board members on there, that you won't get the input that you want from the appropriate people in terms of what they really need out of their buildings. And it will be, so I think that a board member sitting on that capital committee predominantly with me and Darrell and Terry, and occasionally administrators, would be a welcome accommodation to building a long-term plan for capital projects.
Are you wanting a motion tonight to form it?
Yes.
And for the person?
Yes, yes, so actually two different things. The motion to form the committee, and then we need to discuss who the appointee would be within the board.
Well, just on the outset, that might condense it. I make a motion that we approve the capital committee, and I recommend that Chris Cunningham sit on it, and.
Back up.
There you go.
All right.
Delay, she's like ahead.
That's exactly right, exactly right. Okay, so it has been moved by Harold Wingert and seconded by Susan Moore that we approve the development of a capital committee and that Chris Cunningham be our representative appointed to that position. Is there any discussion before we vote? All right, we will do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore? Susan?
Yes.
Chanda Olmsted?
Yes.
Melodya Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0.
All right, Chris, I'll reach out to you here shortly and get you some information.
All right, we are down to the reason a lot of you are tuning in tonight and maybe not watching the other event that's going on the television right now. Transition to full-time. Dr. Cobb is going to present our plan to return to full-time education in the classroom.
Dean, if you'd pull up gating criteria real quick. So last time we met, I showed you this grading, gating criteria, which would have been about the nine, six time would have been the last data sets that we would have had prior to. And we saw predominantly green on the screen. Since then, I think last week, we had somewhere between 40 and 50 new cases of COVID arrive in Franklin County. We've also seen a quarantine of two different teams now, as well as a number of students. What we, what we haven't seen is a lot of our students, our school-age students, be tested and identified as positive, which is a good thing for us. But certainly it is existing within our county, and we are beginning to see some of the spikes that I think our county health department and many state officials thought we would see once school reopened. But overall, at the state, it has been pretty steady for the most part. So take the data how you want to. I mean, there's lots of different ways to read and address the data. What we do know is that last week was pretty rough for us. And you can see by the 9/20 data that we were up to 211.4 positive tests per 1,000, 100,000 inhabitants, right? So the green area in there is somewhere, I think, less than 45, maybe less than 50 gets you in green. So we were four times that, which obviously puts us into the red. The two-week percentage, you can see, has grown over the course of time. The 9/27, which just came out today at 12:30, would indicate that we're back in the green. So one of the reasons that that occurs is because there was, because of the positive tests, there was a huge increase in testing. So remember that this particular data set is the percentage of positive tests versus total tests. So because we saw the increase, we saw a huge increase in testing amongst people. We didn't have a lot of those people turn out to be positive. So that criterion went way down in terms of the percentages. It doesn't necessarily mean much in its singular data point, but together, they all provide some appropriate data for us. The hospital one, even though it's green across the top, and this is one that doesn't impact us greatly in part because we're a part of the northeast portion of Kansas, not the Johnson County. So northeast portion, there are a ton of hospitals in this group. What we don't have data specifically for is hospital availability at Advent Health, which might may be more indicative of where we're really at, but we don't have access to that data. You can also see the trend data is predominantly red now as we, as we've continued to go up, really since school started. But again, those are not necessarily our positive tests, nor are our students the ones that have tested positive at a high rate. But overall, in the county, you're seeing what the, what the trend data is. The question has come to me as to why are we having this conversation when the data looks the way that it does over the course of the last two weeks, and so on and so forth? And seemingly, the hybrid model that we have embedded in our schools is working, which I think is a loose and a relative term. Yes, our kids are coming to school, and yes, we're educating them in a half-day model. I don't know that you can say that we're getting everything that we wanted to get out of a hybrid model because it's a hybrid model. We're seeing our kids for half of the time, and they're learning on their own for the other half of the time. So one of the pieces of this data is absenteeism. And what you can see right there is that we have 91% attendance rate. On the surface, that probably sounds pretty good. Typically, we have 95 to 96% of our students attending school every day. So in a hybrid model, we're down 4% or 5%, and this is over the course of the first 13 days. So I lumped it all together to give us one, one data set. But it would be, it would be fairly consistent across all of those, those times. So we, we are seeing a decline in attendance. What that doesn't take into effect is remote learning. And every one of our principals would sit here and tell you that our remote learning is not having great attendance, that we are struggling to engage kids who have chosen to do remote, and that we are struggling to get them to, to, to attend every session that we have in those remote environments. So you have a decline in attendance, and really, 4% or 5% is pretty substantial in in-person learning and attendance. And we're struggling to meet our expectation in remote. So we know that this environment is creating some issue with attendance that we begin, that we need to begin to address. So that is a big piece of it. The other portions of why are that we are, we are not able to access our full complement of curriculum in this environment. I don't think that there would be a teacher that would stand in front of you today and say that they're going to be able to provide for their kids everything that they would in a full-day environment. We knew that going in. That was a part of what we indicated in a hybrid environment, which is also why we said we would come back and review to see if we could move out of this environment when the time came. The, what we're, what the concern will be if we continue in this environment for long periods of time will exist in gaps in learning because of the inability for us to have kids for full days. So and this is not just elementary-age kids, this is all the way through. Specifically, there are concerns K1 and 2 on foundational skills. If we don't teach kids to read appropriately now, there is a opportunity for a long-term effect of a lack of those skills, which will, the longer we go, the more difficult will be to overcome. Now granted, those kids have another 10 years to try to overcome, but that's a, that's a lot of hardship on kids moving through. If we're talking about high school-age kids, and let's say that we have kids who want to be engineers, I'm fairly positive that even with all of the technology that we have, and Mrs. Miller might, might disagree with me if she were here, but something tells me that she wouldn't, is that it's going to be very difficult for her to provide a full year of calculus in the timeframe that we have our kids. Now, we might be able to do so from a technology standpoint in utilizing remote learning to ensure that we have those kids. But if any of you have ever taken calculus before, it is a difficult course to navigate through. And being able to have a teacher with you to do some of those things is oftentimes more, more beneficial to the student than to try to do it through, through computer programming. So we're going to see deficits, for lack of a better term, pre-K through 12, when we don't have our, our students in school every day. That is a huge concern and one that we need to, to make sure that we can address. So as we talk about those foundational skills, the real question becomes the balance, the risk management, and the safety of our kids, and the academic needs that we have moving forward, which is the purpose behind this conversation. It is not just to say, let's go back to school because. It is about what can we do to create a safe environment for our kids? It is about what can we do to create a safe environment for our kids while improving what we're offering from an academic standpoint, to ensure that we don't have large-scale deficits if this continues, if this pandemic continues on for large portions of time. Think about it, when we came back to school, we were already 180-some-odd days since our students had stepped into a classroom. Now, they're seeing a classroom for basically three hours a day, every day, and only seeing their teachers every other day, 6 through 12, and only getting basically reading and writing from their, reading, writing, and math from their core teachers at the elementary level. That is not enough for a long-term effect of what we want to do with our students and the needs that we need to meet for them academically. So, the plan is this, and again, none of that information is intended to indicate that our teachers are not working hard, they're working their tails off. Our teachers have done more to try to plan for something that they've never had to do before in the last 12 days of school than they would probably ever have to in a normal setting. It has been completely different for them, and there are a number of hurdles for them to overcome. So, it is not to indicate that teachers are not working hard, or that they're not doing what we're supposed to do, or that there's something wrong with what they are doing. The hybrid model that we have implemented worked exactly the way that we wanted it to when we implemented it. It worked better than we probably could have imagined when we decided that it was the model that we would use. What we knew from the beginning, that it was not the long-term solution to the academic needs of our kids, and it was intended to be a holdover until we could get our kids back into school full-time. So, with that being said, there is a plan that we have put together. We have worked very hard with administrators to try to come up with a solution, to see how we can get kids back in a classroom and be safe. Part of that is dependent upon teacher movement, which would be the hiring of a kindergarten teacher at Sunflower. Remember that we had a late resignation at Sunflower. When we initially looked at numbers, we didn't know that we needed to fill, especially with remote learning, the way that it was going to take place. But moving back to a full-time program and offering remote at the same time would probably lend itself better to bringing that position back. So, from a monetary standpoint, that money has been budgeted for, it doesn't impact our budget adversely in any way, shape, or form, we just need to get the teacher in the position. There would be two transfers at Lincoln. One would be to a kindergarten classroom. Initially, we would look at them as being a full-time remote teacher in the kindergarten class, and the other would be a third-grade, a transfer of an existing teacher to third-grade at Lincoln. The issue with identifying that those are the distinct moves that we're going to make right now is that the more we leave this opportunity open for parents to come back, we are getting a lot of parents indicating that they're ready to come back full-time. So, the need for remote is diminishing, the need for in-person is increasing, which means that we need to find a way to balance and shuffle the number of kids that are in those in-person classes, to ensure that we have small enough class sizes that we can maintain that safe environment. So, what I'm telling you today is depictive of what we know today. As we continue to get information, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, down the road, those numbers may have shifted, which is where I would want to make sure that this board gives us the latitude to maneuver through this plan, as we need to, to ensure that we meet our students' and teachers' needs in this environment. So, the dates that we would make a presumptive move would be pushed back. We had initially talked about in a board update, possibly October the 12th. These measures have certainly created some pause for us to at least make sure that our safety measures are appropriate. We've had conversations with the county health officer multiple times about what he thinks is appropriate as we move forward in the safety of our kids. And I will tell you that certainly, at the elementary level, he has a belief that our kids need to be in school. So, I think we can do this, I think we can do it safely. I think there are still some conversations that we need to have amongst our schools about exactly how that works in the internal operations, not necessarily for this board to discuss. But certainly, how we address students in their classes, how we address passing periods, how we address pickup and drop-off, how we address food service. Most of our buildings have those things under control, but again, as those numbers shift from remote to in-person, we need to make sure that those things align and that we have everything in place as we do this. So, this would start October the 19th, and would include pre-K all the way through fifth grade. Two weeks from that point, which would be November the 2nd, and the reason that we look at two weeks is that it would give us a full incubation period to see how any change in the environment would impact the positive testing that would go on during that time. So, November 2nd would be the middle school date. The high school continues to be set to return at the beginning of the quarter, which is what we indicated that we would be reviewing when we first started going into the hybrid model, that we would review and possibly bring back at the end of the quarter. So, by the end of the quarter, this plan would have a full-time opportunity for students or a remote learning opportunity for students, no longer a hybrid model. What I would present to this board is that on October 12th, which is our next board meeting, that we continue to look at this criteria and other criteria and other data that we have in terms of how COVID-19 is impacting our city, our county, and our schools. And if on October the 12th, we've not seen a stabilization in COVID-19, that we simply push it back and make the next decision at the next board meeting. So, a two-week pushback of a three-week interval. So, as we go to the next board meeting, we say, "We'll reassess the data at that point in time. If the data looks good, here's our implementation date. If the data does not look good, then we continue to hold off in a hybrid model." It will be difficult for us to transition from full-time back to hybrid because of the changes that we will make and because of how remote learning works. So, I think it's important for this board to know that should we make the decision to go in-person, full-time, that it would be much more difficult for us to transition back to a hybrid model. It would take a great deal more maneuverability to do so, and that you might see more remote learning in that environment when quarantines and those things like that occur. And they're going to occur. They're occurring right now in this model, so they're certainly going to occur at the other model as well. But that is the plan in a nutshell, as we have worked through it. Again, there's a lot in this plan that is dependent upon each building and how each building will run, which is not necessarily a board issue. But the plan itself would indicate that we would have a transfer of two staff, a hiring of one, to meet our staffing needs. And I would ask for some flexibility of this board to make sure that we can maneuver those based upon how our students fall out in that environment, dependent upon remote versus in-person in the transition there. I would also ask that we have the ability to make sure that our parents know that after this Friday, the determination that they make about in-person or remote, regardless of the timeframe in which we choose to go back to a full-time model, is set through the end of the semester. So, as of Friday, if they've not let us know that they are going to stay remote, if they are remote students, they're going to be remote students through the end of the semester. Because what we're going to deal with is if we wind up with only one or two remote students at each building, we're going to have a teacher that is there for four or five kids, and we're going to have an influx of kids in all of our other grade levels, which is going to mean that at least one building will have a higher volume of teacher-to-pupil ratio than they really need to. So, we need to make sure that we know exactly what those numbers are, we can create some stabilization across the district. So, we want to be able to say, "As of Friday, you're either in-person or you're remote until we get through the end of the semester, and then we can make some changes with that as well." Again, that's a different statement than we made initially, but as we transition here, I think it's important for us to have that stability there. So, that is the plan, as we have discussed it with our staff. And certainly, I want to be able to answer any questions that anybody might have about it as we move forward.
Dr. Cobb, thank you. Board members, this is a very important topic, and I want to make sure that everyone gets their questions answered, and also make it easy for those that are viewing to kind of hear where we're coming from. So, what I'd like to do is just start from one side and go around, one time to ask questions related to the reopen plan, and then a second time, following with any statements or opinions that you want to share prior to us making a motion on this item. So, we'll start with Shanda Olmsted. Do you have any questions about the reopen plan for Dr. Cobb?
I'm just trying to picture the classroom sizes and the spacing of the children, where you're distancing them safely when you completely bring everybody back in.
So, if you were to read the executive order, EO 2059, one of the things that it indicates is that students should be socially distant at six feet unless they are all wearing masks, which is a part of the order anyways. So, what the governor indicated in this order was that when schools choose to attend full-time, it is the right of students to attend school, and subsequently, they can't dictate that schools would have to go outside of their realm of possibility to be able to provide that service. So, in having conversations with Dr. Ransome as well, when our students are wearing masks in that environment with constant hand sanitizing, with constant cleaning of spaces, he feels that the environment is safe for our kids. So, I think we can create that safe environment there. It is certainly going to create anxiety, right? If we're being transparent here, it's certainly going to create anxiety. There's a difference between anxiety and a lack of safety, and we don't believe that it's an unsafe environment for our kids.
One more question. And those rules, I assume, will basically apply on the buses too, correct?
Yes.
With assigned seating?
Yes, yes. So, the same things that we have on our buses now, which is currently assigned seating and cleaning of the buses, when we would go back to a full-time transportation model, they would still have assigned seating that would be their space.
Thank you.
Chris Cunningham, do you have any questions regarding the reopen plan?
Do we have any applicants for the kindergarten teacher?
I didn't look today. It's been open for just a couple of days. One of the reasons that we held off before was that I didn't think we would get a lot of applicants that would be quality. I think we do have some quality applicants in our own district that are currently subs for us, that would be able to do this job and do it well. So, that's certainly an option that we have. Again, every time we use one of our subs, it creates a gap someplace else, but we will have somebody that can do this job and do it well for us, yeah.
And are the transfers okay? Do they kind of know that the transfers?
Yeah, we, Mr. Interst had a conversation with them last week. Both of them are on board with those transfers when they need to take place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you've answered two of my questions. Linda Alderman?
When you have talked about balance the risk management, safe environment for kids, also the teachers too.
Yes, absolutely.
Should there be, I know we have provided through our COVID funds some extra protection for teachers whose health requires that they need it, and is that money still available? And should teachers feel that need, they can?
Yes, so, we've actually spent some fairly significant funds for some of our staff to make sure that they do have safety protocol in place. And certainly, if there is a doctor's indication that those things need to take place, we have provided them for staff, and we'll continue to do so. I think there will also become a time when we have to look. So, when we initially talked about COVID relief funds, the only things that we thought we had were a pot of money that were the school COVID relief funds. Since then, there's been another $430,000 that has been provided to us that has really taken care of a lot of our technology and a lot of our PPE requirements. And we turned in the first round of reimbursement for that last week. We have the funds, if there are staffing needs that we need to address in order to do some of these things, we certainly have the funds, which was the intent of the COVID relief funds to begin with. How do we make this work? We can certainly utilize them to do those things. Terry is really good at her job, and we've done a great job of managing money, and we certainly have some funds to do some things there, and kind of a one-time sense as we work through this. And again, that's what those COVID relief dollars were intended for, and because of Spark Funds, we still have a fairly significant amount of those dollars left.
Okay, good. Julie Dandrio, I do have one question. When we talk about the flexibility of the dates, let's say it's decided at the next meeting to go ahead and proceed, is there also flexibility with the starting of the additional schools, just depending on the metrics and such? Or is it, once the plan starts, it is definitely so many?
No, I think that the way that we look at this is determinant of how our city and our county are working at the time. So, if it's not right to start the middle school on November the 2nd, but elementary isn't really having a difficult time, we've dealt with some quarantines, but maybe it's not time. I don't want anything to be set in stone so much that we're making decisions that aren't based upon what we know is safe and right for our students. So, if we had to push that back, there's no reason why we can't push it back. I don't want any of these things to become so dramatic that, "Here's the date, it is the date, there's no opportunity for changing of the date." I think that it is important for us to identify dates for a couple of reasons. One, it creates accountability and preparation, that we need to be prepared for these things, and it also allows for our parents to begin to understand that change is coming, and for two reasons. Those that are ready to get their kids to school full-time, and those that are not. And certainly, we've got to balance both of those things, and they need to be aware of what is happening as we go down that road.
Thank you. And I just had one more question. About how many remote learners do we have right now, approximately?
We were, when we started, we were about 22% of all of our students were remote learners, which is pretty substantial. So, we had 20, just over 2,200 kids, so we're at 450-some-odd remote learners across the district. Some of those have indicated that they would come back, but I would still guess that even at that, we would probably still be sitting at around 300 remote learners, K through 12. A number, I didn't receive any emails after we sent the letter out, any emails or calls from people wanting discussions about going back in-person. I did get 10, 11, 12 from people concerned that we would take away the remote option. So, certainly, there is some desire for people to continue in that remote setting, for desire of safety and ensuring that they're not susceptible at that level for viruses that are out there.
And that will continue to be an option for people who choose so.
Yeah, at least through the first semester. What I've told them all is that at least through the first semester, and again, everything that we do has an endpoint at some point in time. I think that if we see dramatic changes in how this virus impacts our community in November towards the positive, then maybe when we get to the end of the semester in January, I think January 19th or something like that is the end of the first semester now, then maybe that's the end of the remote learning process. And maybe it's not. Maybe we know that we still need to provide that through the remainder of the year. But again, that would be the next point of discussion as we move forward, what we intend to do with remote for the long term.
Thank you. Harold Wingert?
Thank you. I do have a few questions that I jotted down. And number one, I echo what Linda Alderman said. I appreciate that it's just not the student's safety, it's also the staff, the faculty, paras, and things like that, and I know that you're working on that as well. And I know that you're working on that as well. Couple of ideas is October 19th is actually the conference week. So I don't know, again, I'm not getting in the weeds. You can do as you please. I don't know if it's good to come back that week and explain what we're doing, or we come back the week after and allow teachers and parents to have conversation. If I was a parent, would I come and and ask questions? You know, so I just might throw that out there.
Yep.
I do like the idea of coming back October 12th as a board and you updating us with the current deal. I think that's a great idea. I, one, looked at the website, the Franklin County COVID website, as you and I discussed today. We have 339 positive cases in a county of 25,000 people. 30 of those came from OU. OU's going to test 100 more kids this week. So I think the challenge of that is of the 30 that came from OU, 13 had local addresses. That means 17 did not. So we understand there's going to be some flexibility over the next couple of weeks. I think that's okay as well. I know that I'm kind of one that likes to bring the district back as one. We we went out as one. I know you said there's some advantages of separating that. I also think that it's kind of nice I'm all back by end of the semester, end of the quarter. So I don't know, again, I'm not, I'm fine with flexibility, and you get you guys can make the decision. But, you know, if we have to push back the start date for elementary, I don't know that it automatically means we have to move everything else back if the numbers are
Sure.
showing the right signs by first of November. And then the only other thing that I kind of want to state the obvious is when we said let's do this hybrid deal, we approved a plan that said 10% of our students in a classroom, we we put the classroom under quarantine. 10% in a building, we put it under quarantine, 10% in the district. And I think that's important for us to know that, yes, we're going to see some COVID cases, and that's okay. I mean, it isn't okay. But what I'm saying is I think we need to know that you're doing everything you can, the the building administrators are, the teachers are doing everything. Even with our best efforts, we're going to see some COVID cases, right? And we just need to know what's acceptable and know that there's a number out there that has been looked at by county health officials, by school officials, by KSDE, other people. So I think as we talk about, you know, what does the future look like? I don't think it's we ought to we ought to keep in mind this plan exists and that, you know, if we see a few tick up, that we're just not automatically going to panic. So those are my thoughts.
Harold, I and I appreciate that, and I think it is important to remember that the county put this thing together for schools with the help of us. And its intention was exactly what what Harold indicated, to not get overly excited about one or two positive cases to the point that we're making rash decisions about about schools and whether students attend or don't attend, and that we have some guidelines that that we can work off of to do so. I think it's important to remember that the the volume of quarantines that we have seen recently are coming from other districts and other schools. That this was something that we knew was going to happen, that when when we decided to have athletic competitions, that we were going to put kids in a situation in which they were going to be in very close contact without masks and without those things with other kids. And that was something that that the people who chose to be a part of that accepted. That's that's a part of what it was. And now we see a quarantine of a number of our football players, a quarantine of some some eighth graders at the middle school because of something that exists in other buildings. There's a piece of this that is not in our control. And and the purpose of this is to ensure that because there is some things that are out of our control, that we can go back to this to make sure that we can bring maybe some balance back to the conversation. So Harold, I appreciate you bringing that up, and it's certainly something that we need to to make sure that we consider moving forward.
Thank you.
Susan Moore, any questions regarding the reopen plan for?
I do not have anything else other than what's been asked.
All right, thank you. Lydia Payne?
You said that if we go back, then and then there were quarantines, that it would be more difficult to go back to hybrid, and we would need to go to remote.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So how long, like, what are your plan? Is it like then just from there on out, remote? Are you thinking like a two-week remote or what?
No, this is the document that we would look at in terms of what that remote is. So there was there's some guidelines, for lack of a better term, as to how that works. So if there's a positive case in the in the class, and we'll use elementary as an example, if there's a positive case in the class, I think what this indicates is that initially, they'll take a look at that one student and remote that student. They'll they'll isolate or quarantine that student. We're going to have to figure out how we transfer them to a remote class or how that teacher remotes that student in. If it's if there are there are a large scale of exposure to to that student, we may wind up quarantining that entire classroom, teacher, students, whatever, and then everybody in that classroom is remote for the remainder of the quarantine. Now, that is all dependent. So initially, people think 14 days. The reality is it's dependent upon exposure to the positive person, right? So if we wanted to use football as an example today, we found out seven days after the exposure, so the quarantine is actually seven days because the first seven days have already expired. So there's no exact answer. Those will be the guidelines, and through the county health department, we'll work through those things. But it will be dependent upon each singular situation as to how we will address the quarantine.
Okay. And then you said that the the transfer for kindergarten at Lincoln, you said initially that that would be the full-time remote?
Yes, that's the plan at this point, yes.
So then, my concern is, you know, that we, as few students as possible, have to be shuffled to switch from a teacher. So I just want to make sure that we're trying to keep, because I know some grades have split their remote duties.
Yeah, our our intention, when we started looking at how we would deal with transitions, is to try to ensure as little change as possible for our kids. We we know that that our our kids don't enjoy transition so much, and it certainly leads to some negative outcomes at times. It doesn't mean that it's going to be without transition for some of them. But yes, our intent in making the initial case for transition specifically at Lincoln would be to minimize those those student moves as much as possible. How if we see a bunch of those kids, and I don't know what a bunch is, but if we see the enough kids transition to in-person, that we can't keep our kindergarten classes low enough, what we might wind up doing is moving kids to a full-time or a one-person kindergarten remote instructor throughout the district. So you're going to see some transition of those kids, and maybe that one teacher has kids from Lincoln, Garfield, and Sunflower, and that that other teacher becomes an in-person teacher. We just don't know because we we'll have to see how the 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 numbers fall out from the in-person piece. But that's that's why we want to make sure that we have a deadline for parents to make those decisions so that we can make good decisions about our staffing.
Okay, very good. And then lastly, what is the plan? I'm we all know I have my concerns with masks. This is not new news. So what is the plan to give kid? I'm concerned about kids having to wear masks for for eight hours. So I I know other schools have plans of how they give them breaks, and I'm wondering what ours?
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, and and we've talked about how other schools are doing this. There's a lot of schools that are not following the mandates. They're not following the mandates on the hand disinfectant every hour. They're not following guidelines on masks. They're not following guidelines on on gathering protocols. Pickup and drop-off is just kind of normal. I guess that there are a number of people that are that are making those decisions that feel like maybe those things are too hard or whatever it happened to be. That is not how we have have chosen to try to address this in our district. I do recognize the difficulty in students and even staff wearing a mask for eight hours a day. So I think that what, you know, we initially had talked about making sure that we stagger recess and that we stagger lunch and we stagger afternoon recess to to where maybe there's there's no there's no part of the day in which they spend more than an hour and a half before they can they can take their mask off. What I do know is that as we get to 15, 16, 17 kids in a class, I don't know that there's a teacher in our district that will want their students not wearing a mask. And so that, again, becomes the balancing act of if we don't have teachers that are ready to do their work, doesn't really matter whether we have kids in class a full day or half a day or any day. So it's a it's a very difficult balancing act that we have to do. But that's as good as we've come up with at this point, but it will it will continue to be a conversation moving forward, I'm sure.
Because every teacher gets like an hour planning period?
50-minute planning.
50 minutes. So I mean, I'm sure if they stay in the room, they all take their masks off and get a break. So I mean, our students definitely deserve a break from their masks.
Anything else, Maria?
Okay.
No.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else going back around again? Make sure did you?
I just have some comments. One, I appreciate us as a district administration and all of us in here as a board that we have just been open through this whole deal. We haven't had, you know, analogy I used with somebody today was the rabbit and hare. We're not trying to sprint through this. We're very methodical. And the other thing is I was doing some math today, counting the end of last year and then through the middle of October, our students will have lost basically almost 19 weeks of education. And I know that that's going to cut deep, and the gains we saw last year that we were making on test scores, I'm sure, are going to show that, that we've basically missed almost a half a year of education. I just hope when we get going with this and that we do get kids back in the building, that we can stay consistent and not have to start and stop, and we don't have these things that get up to 10% because that's just inefficient and that I'm sure affects the kids and the teachers deeply if we have to go backwards. I mean, that is just humiliating. So I do think we have to put a target out there somewhere as a calendar date of what we're shooting for. But I think all of us here have the openness to realize that that's a target date, and things can change as they have, and we may have to adjust our plan yet again. But I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Linda Alderman, do you have anything to add?
I had a philosophical conversation with myself. I have a whole page of stuff, so bear with me. When this COVID thing first started, they talked about we need to get ready for the new normal. Well, we're living the new normal right now. We do not know how long COVID is going to last. If a vaccine comes out in a year or so, maybe it'll work, maybe it won't. And even if it does work, probably a third of our population won't get vaccinated anyway. So this is the new normal, and probably distancing and masks and all of this is going to be part of our life for quite some time. I I think my one of my concerns is is high school graduation rates. I can see a potential decline in kids just losing interest in school, and and that that is tragic in and of itself. High school, high school kids need to be in school because in high school, they are learning how to study, they are learning study skills, they are learning things that they are going to need for college. I mean, the kids in college are kind of doing okay because they have these study skills that they learned in high school. But it's really hard for the high school kids to do the self-teaching. They just don't have the maturity, they don't have the skills to do that. So that's part of my concern, and that's why, you know, I agree, I think we need to get these kids back in school. But as I was writing all this, I looked at my planner, and I never look at my planner because I have these little cute little sayings, and it's like, whatever. But this one jumped out at me, and I think it was put there for me to see, and it said, "Fear is created not by the world around us, but in the mind, by what we think is going to happen." So we need to be cautious but not fearful. So that ends my.
I don't have anything to add aside from I I do like this plan. I like the flexibility in it. It sounds like you and and the administrative team have worked together to come up with something that's going to work and be effective in getting these kids back in school, which is ultimately where we all want kids to be. I mean, that's why we do this, but certainly, we have to to do it in a way that is is safe and is, as Chris said, methodical so that we're not switching back and forth, which makes it very ineffective. Harold Winkert, anything to add?
Lastly, is I do appreciate the effort that you and your admin and the building admin and the BLT teams are doing, because I do know the frustration of you spend late summer and and into the PD days, and you plan for one thing, and then all of a sudden, we're going flip and go back the other way, and there's going to be a lot of effort. So thank you for your team, and thank you for all the teachers and admin for being willing to say that they're willing to be flexible enough to make adjustments. The last thing is I, you know, we are not called the school board, even though some people call us. We are the Board of Education. And I take that very seriously because I do believe that our fundamental right is educate the students, okay? And when I hear about the gaps and I hear, you know, people falling, students falling behind, to me, that's paramount in what we're supposed to do. We're the Board of Education, and and I agree, the sooner we can get back to education safely, then I full-throat endorse the plan you're putting together, the flexibility you put in with the eye of the data, understanding it is important to know what we're doing. So thank you for doing it. Thank you for the board. Thank you for your teachers and admin, so.
Lydia Payne, did I'm sorry, I skipped over Susan. You're you're virtual, and I I didn't didn't recognize you. Susan, do you have anything to add?
Well, I guess I have several little thoughts, and I will let you can take them for what they're worth. We are in uncharted waters and a no-win situation from all sides. And the way that we do that is with creativity and vigilance to care for our students and our staff. As you know, I'm a healthcare person, and so the way that I've had to frame this in my mind is to think about the risk and benefit. When a surgeon goes in to cut something out, he has to explain to the to the patient, there's this good stuff that's going to happen, but oh, there might be a few complications. You might get a blood clot, you might get pneumonia, you might die, but we still think it's worth doing this. It's still worth taking that risk. And this is the new normal, and we are going to be challenged like this for a long time to come. So I think that we have no option but to consider the kids when we're thinking through losing all that time. And so I guess I'm definitely in favor of moving forward with the plan. I know the risk, we've had to weigh the risk and benefit of people being in close spaces, all those things, but the risk and benefit, I think the benefit to our students psychologically, physiologically, being in school, I think, and education-wise, is is far outweighing the risk of of COVID. We've got to be vigilant. We know it works. We know when people practice all the social distancing and or proper hand hygiene and all those hygienic things and masks, we know it works. So I think we should go forward.
Thank you, Susan. Lydia Payne?
Yes. I am I am a big believer in routine, and I know I shared with you, you know, we had a rough start with our with my spread of ages and trying to get everybody lined out and two kids that can't really read and then trying to get everybody. It was a rough start. So we are now in a pretty good routine. So I at first, I'm, you know, I'm a little hesitant to shake that up just to get out of the routine. And I think that, I mean, humans in general thrive on routine, but especially children. So I would I just want to make sure that, you know, we think that whatever we start, we can continue. Obviously, like Harold said, you know, we know there's going to be cases, and you have told us there's going to be other shutdowns of some size or whatever. So I would just like, I know teachers are very creative people and like to try new things, but I would like for them and like to try new things, but I would like for them to just try and continue with some sort of routine once we get back to school. So then if there is like a sudden remote, that it's something that the kids can continue when they have to go back home and they can kind of, even though it's completely different because they're gonna be at home, but they can kind of know what to expect so that it'll be easier than just having to go completely into something else because what they're doing can't be recreated at home or on remote, if that makes sense.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think Melidia brings up a good point, and certainly a conversation that we have to have with our staff, is that a return to full-time does not mean a return to the way that we taught prior to COVID. It has to be a manner of teaching in which can be continued when a remote situation occurs, because it is going to occur at some point in time. Maybe we'll have some teachers that get lucky enough that they never have to go through a quarantine with some of their kids. But I would guess that that'll be not the majority of them. Some point in time, they will deal with a quarantine of some kid in their classroom. If that is the case, then we need to make sure that as we transition, then how we've utilized Google Classroom, how we've utilized the technology has to continue in a in-person environment so that when we're not in person, it's not new. That we know how to do it and that our kids are used to doing it. And that is gonna be a big piece of this moving forward. So I very much appreciate that. And we will do the best that we can to make sure that we do have that routine in place.
All right. Thank you, board members, for sharing those insights. Would anyone like to make a motion at this time?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the plan presented tonight.
Second.
It was moved by Chris Cunningham and seconded by Harold Wingert, that we approve the plan presented to open full-time as discussed tonight. We will do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0.
I will continue to keep you all updated as to how these things exist. One, your comment about the 19th being parent-teacher conference week. It's actually one of the reasons why we moved the middle school off of that date. So I'll meet with administrators tomorrow, make sure that the 19th is the right date or is the 26th the right date.
Just throwing that there.
We'll make sure that we continue to have those conversations. We'll make sure that we keep that open to the public as we move forward.
Wonderful. Dr. Cobb, stay right there because you would like to present salary increases for classified staff.
Yeah, so a couple of good things. One, teachers ratified the negotiated agreement today in a vote. So next time we have a board meeting, we will approve the new negotiated agreement as well as salary increases and all of that for our other staff. But we do have the opportunity to increase or approve salary increases for classified staff. And I don't know that there's ever been a year that I've been more happy to talk to our classified staff about a significant increase as they have worked their tails off, especially custodial and maintenance and making sure that we're able to do the things that we can do. Transportation as well, they have gone above and beyond in terms of trying to make sure that we can meet the needs of all of our kids coming and going in this environment. So what you see there is a 50 cent an hour increase for returning classified staff. This would be paras, secretaries, those types of personnel for those that already exist with us, and then increasing the column by 25 cents. So all of our current employees would get the 50 cent raise. The column would increase by 25 cents to make sure that anybody new coming in is going to have a benefit to a salary increase, that we remain competitive with those around us. Custodial and maintenance, same idea, except we are not, we're competitive, but not to the point where we wanna be. So that's why you see a difference in what we're offering custodial and maintenance, is that we need to make sure that we can still be at the forefront of drawing people into our district. So you see an hour increase there to make sure that we can remain competitive and an increase in their column by 50 cents. So anybody working currently with us is a dollar an hour. The column itself increases by 50 cents for any new employee coming in. And of course, transportation, 50 cents an hour increase to their drive time. Their seat time remains the same. So when they're just sitting and watching basketball, I think it's like $10 an hour or something like that. Their drive time will increase 50 cents an hour. So those are our classified increases, and we'll do admin and directors when we approve the negotiated agreement.
Could somebody like to make a motion to approve the increases as presented?
Madam President, I move that we make the increases as stated.
Second.
It was moved by Harold Wingert and seconded by Linda Alderman, that we approve the increases as presented. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that carries 7-0. We are down to a personnel report. You all have been provided the personnel report. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve said report?
Madam President, I move to approve the personnel report.
Second.
It was moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Chris Cunningham, that we approve tonight's personnel report. A roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that carries 7-0 as well. And we are down to announcements.
All right. So a couple of things. One, congratulations to Caroline and Summer, Lydia, Kaylee, Ty, Logan, Ethan, and Trey. They were all identified as homecoming king and queen candidates. And then our king and queen was Summer and, I think, Ty? Summer and Ty. So congratulations to them. This is, you know, it was brought up in a conversation earlier that that our students, especially at the high school, had lost a number of things that make high school what it is. And we saw that at the beginning of last year with prom, and graduation was then different, and here we are with homecoming. And a lot of things are different for them than what they had envisioned when they first took their first steps into Ottawa High School as freshmen. So we will continue to try to do the best we can in this new normal to create new things for these students to really celebrate the things that they do and try to make sure that the things that Ottawa High School offers still create long-lasting memories for them as we move forward. As I said before, teachers ratified a contract for 2021. That's great news for us. And thank you to Linda and Melidia and Shanda who went through the negotiations process with us and I think put together a good negotiated agreement for our staff. And I also wanted to congratulate Ottawa High School. They've been asked, Kelly and I met with Jay Scott last week to present as a redesigned school at the KSDE conference. I will just tell you that this extended, and a call to me earlier today, that KSD has asked us to be a a pillar in their conversation on how redesign impacts school accreditation and what that means. So we continue to be looked upon as a leader in school redesign and what schools should look like across the state of Kansas. And a big part of that is our administrators. The crazy thing that happens at high schools, and I wasn't aware of it as much as a high school principal as I am now as a superintendent, is that OHS gets a lot of the glory in the great things that our district does because the reality of it is that high schools are the center point of all school districts. And that's just the way it goes. And it's the thing that you can put out there publicly that people can really see and get an understanding of. The steam bus is a perfect example. This is something that people can go and it's tangible evidence of what exists there. Even though we talk about this and we congratulate OHS for being a part of that, all of our schools are doing amazing things with redesign. All of our principals should be commended for their work. All of our teachers and building leadership teams should be commended for their work and making this a great place to be. And I wanna make sure that they know specifically, as we talk about a plan to reopen, how much I appreciate what they do and how much I wanna make sure that they have the ability to provide input and insight because those are the reasons why we continue to get recognized for the things that we do. And certainly with this reopening plan, they will have a great amount of time with their principals in the next few weeks to be discussing exactly what it looks like in each one of their buildings and providing their input, insight, and ideas for us moving forward. So congratulations to all of our staff and all of our principals for continuing to be leaders in education in the state of Kansas. And that's all I have today.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Go Chiefs!
That carries 7-0, thank you.
Did I say that?